Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September Board Meeting for the Penridge School District. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order and then join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Cron, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Adams Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Casper?
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Agoma?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Eurnell?
Here.
Thank you. At this point, we have neither student nor staff ready for admission tonight, but Dr. Rattigan does have a presentation.
It is my pleasure to start this portion of the meeting by recognizing a school board member tonight for her eight years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and taxpayers of the district. Mrs. Christine Yardley first joined the board in 2007 and served until 2011. She took a two-year hiatus and then rejoined the board in 2014. Christine, I would like to present you with the certificate from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, recognizing you on the PSBA Honor Roll of School Board Service. So, here's what the certificate says. The Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association proudly presents the Certificate of Appreciation to School Director Christine Yardley, Penridge School District, in recognition of the unique role of the school board's service and the long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Thank you, Christine, and thank you.
Thank you. And what Dr. Rattigan didn't say was that your trip around the world and educating your students in numbers of different countries, I think that was a fascinating experience. I wish I had been along, right? At this point, we'll move to public comment. The Penridge School Board welcomes a public comment according to Policy 903. We remind everyone of the following. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer, note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. Speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments to protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community. The Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding ticked-out individuals such as students or district employees privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrator, or to communicate with the Board privately by sending an email to the psp-schoolboard@penridge.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Public comment. Mrs. Furlong.
Sue Furlong, West Rock Hill Township. I was at the committee meeting for facilities, and that was chaired by Ms. Suzette Schmidt. Other members are Barry Casper and Steve Agoma, and there were other attendees. My question is, we had the summary of the enrollment projections by school with the various responses to the situation in which we find ourselves losing substantial student population. I would like to know if anyone has made any alterations to what was presented that night and what is presented on the school board website? Has anybody made any edits or changes to that information?
Mrs. Furlong, I'm not aware that any edits were made. Now, it wasn't everything that was presented in the report.
Okay, now, I'm just talking about the report, nothing else. Okay, I was looking at the report myself, and I know I'm not allowed to ask questions, so since I can't ask any questions, what I'm going to do is point some things out that I'm concerned about. If I look at, I believe it's page one, it's called the District Enrollment, and there's the Roman numeral four at the top of that page, and it has comparison of decision, somebody, I won't say the name, and another outfit, and the Pennsylvania Department of Education enrollment projections, elementary, middle, and high school. On that page, at the end of the first five years, for the middle school, on what is considered to be the moderate response, it shows a 75 increase in the number of students. It's a plus 75. If I go to, I believe it's the next page, and it says summary of enrollment projections by school, and I look at, again, middle schools, what I see is a negative 75. It's in brackets, and it doesn't agree with the percentage change of 3.2%, which is not in brackets. So that becomes a little bit confusing. I believe the detail supports the increase by 75, but I would like for somebody to confirm that. I see that as an error. The other problem that I have when I look at these numbers is if I look at the high school changes, a change of 75 students, whether it's positive or negative, is a 3.2% change. If I go over to the 10-year projection, that has changed to 87, student change, but it's a .05. It's just barely different from the 75, but that percentage change is very dramatically different. So I think your data that you're using here needs to be reviewed. I'm disappointed that no one has caught this except me, but I believe that you would probably like to review your data and make sure that you understand, is that supposed to be a positive 75 for the high school change in student population or a negative 75? That makes a huge difference. That is a swing of 150 students.
Thank you, Mrs. Furlong, and I believe this is just the start of a process, not the end. So we're going to obviously be looking at this. I don't like reading on a computer screen, certainly not 67 pages, so I plan to read this when I have the chance, but it certainly is something that will take months, perhaps years, to decide where we are going. And these are just projections, as you know, and they have been wrong in the past. When I first joined this board in 1991, the Pennsylvania Department of Education and their wisdom projected that the district would have 8,000 students before the term of the millennium. The millennium term, and we never got close to 8,000 students, but that is what it is, and maybe these are better, hopefully the ones from the other parties are better than what the PDE has done in the past.
I'm not disputing the projection.
I know, I know, I understand. So we will look at it for sure. Anyone else want to comment? Not, we'll move on. The next item is the approval of the consent calendar. Are there any items listed on the consent calendar that board members would like voted on separately? No? All right, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed. Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Mrs. Smith, you'll take second. Moved in second to approve the, ah, sorry, the consent calendar as listed. Too much driving today, obviously my brain is gone. Any comments or questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. At this point, we'll move to the student liaison report. Mr. Carey, please.
So students are adjusting to the new and exciting new school year, and to kick it off, we have our homecoming on October 20th and 21st, the 20th being the homecoming game and the 21st being the dance, and then our takeout is October 27th.
Thank you. The President's Report. First, in terms of the right-to-know requests, there are four new requests since our last board meeting, well, actually since August 19th, I want to correct that. Legal fees are $1,270.20, and there is no outstanding balance. Second thing I want to touch on is two nights from now, on Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, we are holding, and I don't mean "we" meeting, but "we," the district is hosting, I think is maybe the correct name. We are hosting, the opioid and heroin crisis hits home, yes, in your backyard, and I reversed those, I apologize, but I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware of this and that they come. Dr. Rattigan and I, among others, will be participating, also Mr. Matt Weintraub, the Bucks County District Attorney, and Mrs. Ms. Diane Rosati, the Executive Director for the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission, Mr. Rattigan, who is the Bucks County Association of Township Officials President, and Chief Hilligas, who represents Perk City Borough and obviously the local police. Hopefully, it'll be an evening that will give insight onto this ongoing crisis that's been so difficult to manage or overcome.
Can you tell us when it will?
I'm sorry. Yes, I would be glad to. Mrs. Furlong, please. It will be in this room at 7:00 PM, supposedly ending at 9:00, although that will come to pass, but it'll be here in my office, and it's Wednesday night. The only thing that I wanted to touch on briefly tonight is this literally is the 50th anniversary of a very impactful situation in public schools, and that was, it was today that the Little Rock Central High School was integrated. Of course, fully integrated, because it turns out the nine students who were African-American were basically allowed into the high school only after President Eisenhower intervened and sent the National Guard troops. But it obviously set off a long and difficult path for many people in terms of the education that combined with the integration of students. And for those of you who don't know, who think of this as a southern problem, it certainly wasn't. The northern end of Delaware, the four school districts that represent Wilmington and their surrounding suburbs were under a desegregation order in 1978, and to this day, the remnants of that order are still in place. There are students from the suburbs bused into Wilmington and vice versa. Obviously, for some, that's not an easy or fun thing to do, and it certainly does add to the bus rides of some of those students. Hopefully, it also improves their education. I guess that's a bigger question for all. Today is the anniversary of that momentous decision forward. So at this point, we'll move on to the remainder of the program, and that would be the Superintendent's Report next.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Eurnell. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Debbie Foot. She is our interim Director of Pupil Services, and this is her first board meeting with us, so welcome, Dr. Foot. Next, I'd like to thank Bedminster Elementary School for the district office meeting room display, and also like to thank Alex Ulmer for a donation of a fossil collection to the Penridge High School Science Department. Our Takes Pride theme of the month of October will be acceptance. Students will be reminded that acceptance is a favorable reception or approval. When you demonstrate acceptance of others, you acknowledge them even if you do not agree or have different beliefs. Individuals who are accepting of others take the time to listen and respect the point of view of others, and we can always agree to disagree in a peaceful manner. So that is October's theme. Some points of pride to share tonight. On September 13th, our students and staff joined some 50,000 groups in 150 countries in a global event developed to explore the development of character from different perspectives. Character Day, now in its fourth year, is an opportunity for students to learn how we begin to develop character traits at a young age and how these traits play a vital role in the success students will experience both in school and in life. The activities fit very nicely with our Takes Pride themes and the emphasis that the district is placing on social and emotional learning in the K-12 curriculum. After watching short, award-winning films on the topic, teachers used free printed discussion materials and resources rooted in evidence-based research that explore important questions such as who am I, who do I want to be in the world, how can I develop the character strengths such as resilience, grit, empathy, courage, humor, curiosity, et cetera, that will make me a successful person? As it was last year, feedback from teachers and students was overwhelmingly positive. We look forward to expanding our participation in Character Day 2018, which is scheduled for September 26th of next year. Next, the Penridge chapter of the National Honor Society welcomed 148 new members during its 24th annual induction ceremony on September 13th. They joined 117 current members who have met the strict eligibility requirements, including a minimum 3.0 grade point average plus evidence of community service, leadership, and character. You can see photos and a full list of the new NH members on our district homepage. The Intelligentsia recently produced an inspiring video feature about senior Evan Pepper, who successfully moved from the sidelines to the soccer field. Evan had given up playing the game he loves after he was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes as a seventh grader. Instead of playing, Evan helped out by videotaping every one of the team's games since his freshman year. This season, however, with the disease under control and encouraged by his coach and friends, Evan is now an active member of the team. Please take a few minutes to visit the Intelligentsia website and look for the Good in Sports segment. And lastly, congratulations to the Penridge Rams marching band, who are taking third place in the recent spectacle and sound competition at Upper Dublin High School. There were about 15 other bands participating in the event. By the way, the band trailer was recently outfitted with custom artwork. Can't miss it, it looks great, and there are photos on our website. That's my report, Dr. Eurnell.
Thank you. Committee reports, the first of which is activities. Mrs. Yardman.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Eurnell. The Activities Committee met on September 6th, and we discussed overnight trip requests and then the changing the entry fee for faculty and staff. So I have two motions tonight. So the first one is I move to approve the following overnight trip requests. The Penridge High School annual ski trip to Killington, Vermont, February 2nd to February 4th. The Penridge High School ski and snowboard trip to Denver, Colorado, from February 15th to February 19th. The Penn North Pennsylvania State Thesbian Conference from November 30th to December 2nd at Central York High School in York, PA, and the Penridge High School FBLA State Leadership Workshop from November 5th to November 6th at Kalahari Resort in Oakdale Manor. And, oh, that's the motion.
Do we have a second to the motion? Sorry. Mrs. Cullen, I heard you first.
Okay, that's fine.
Moved in second to approve the motion for the overnight trip requests. Comments or questions from board members?
Yes, I have a comment. Right, I was going to comment, I'll make the motion and then I'll comment. So the trip to Colorado, the ski trip, is replacing the trip to Utah that was approved previously by the Board, and they found that they couldn't make the trip to Utah feasible with the cost, so that's why we have this trip to Colorado. So it's replacing the other one.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Yardman.
Okay, and the next motion, I move to approve overnight trips for Penridge High School and middle school teams and activities that may qualify for postseason competition/invitation that will require overnight stays and are recommended by the administration. So there's a list, one through seven.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt, is that you? That's what I, okay. Moved in second to approve the other overnight blanket request for the competitions basically at the state level. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Yardman.
Okay, the next Activities Committee meeting is scheduled for November 8, 2017, here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum. There was a curriculum meeting that was held on September 11th. We had a long list of informational themes and a few motions that have risen from that meeting, so I will move to those motions. The first is to approve Bedminster Elementary School's Governor's Institute Grant. This is something for, an opportunity for prenatal through third grade. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Venus, comments? Moved in second to approve this grant. Comments or questions from board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The second motion is to approve the continuation of the summer camps. This would include the Band and String Summer Camp, the Camp Invention, and the Musical Theater Camp. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved in second to approve the continuation of these camps. I will note that this is simply to give a heads-up to our faculty and to parents and students who might want to participate so that they can do so. What we haven't approved and won't be approving tonight is the dates and the actual specific costs as we do every year. So that's forthcoming, once people are clear on what windows will be, but for now, the request is that we get it sort of in early so people can participate, and we've had lots of participants this past year and previous years, so I think it's been very successful for these four items. Any other comments or questions? No? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The third motion is to approve the AP Physics 1 and 2 textbook. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Venus, comments? Moved in second to approve a new textbook for AP Physics 1 and 2. For those of you who don't remember, this was broken out from our AP Physics class that we previously offered, now there are actually two separate classes for this, one and two sequels. Comments or questions from other board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The next curriculum committee is scheduled for October 9th. We will move on to Facilities. So that would be Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Dr. Eurnell. The Facilities Committee met on September 13th. There was presentation of the building utilization study that evening. There's one motion tonight, it is for obsolete items as listed on the agenda, letters A through H.
Do we have a second to the motion for obsolete items? Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved in second to approve the list of obsolete items. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
The next Facilities Committee meeting will be meeting on October 11th in this room.
Thank you. Next is Finance. Mr. Casper is not here tonight, and he was not here actually at the meeting tonight either, so I did bring my notes, hopefully I have the information correct. There was a meeting held on the 13th of September to discuss a number of items. I'm going to turn to Paige. There is, however, just two of those that came, that are coming to the Board for approval tonight. The first is the approval of contracts, and those contracts range from A through J as listed in the agenda. I make that as a motion that we approve those contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Moved in second to approve the contracts. Comments or questions from board members on these contracts? Mrs. Yardman.
Yeah, I have a question about the, which letter is, so H, the Grand View Health?
Oh, yes.
So I just, I have a question on if Dr. Price can answer. So it says in the contract that this, the sponsor is responsible for designing the advertising content and that the Market Street Sports Group will get it to the district within two days, and the district has five days to respond, and if the district doesn't respond in five days, it's considered acceptable. So I'm wondering, because a lot of times the Board won't meet in that time, who will be looking at the advertising material and will it be sent out to the Board? So what will happen with that since we only have five days?
Are you referring to for programs and such?
No, I thought it was for, I thought it was the, just any signs or anything that they're putting up, any advertising that they have. I mean, it could be, I mean, they have, I don't know, I have to go back and find it in the contract.
It's paragraph seven. It says that MSSG shall deliver advertising copy submitted by sponsor within two business days to the school district. The school district shall notify MSSG within five business days of this receipt. I see. So at this point, any signs that just has the sponsored name on it, for instance, Grand View Health, and that's it, no other verbiage with it, the administration can review that just for accuracy, basically, but if there's anything with content, slogans, anything like that, we'll send it to you.
Okay. And then we would just comment back, and so as long as everybody has, as long as there's an issue, so if there was an issue, then we would have to have some discuss it further and see where that goes. I don't see any problem, but.
If there's anything questionable, we'll start with the flag then and point that out there. They're pretty good, from what I have learned, they screen those things before they reach us, so I'd be surprised if it reaches them to even show something like that to us, but if there is something questionable, we'll send that out and everyone will be able to review and give them a conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the contracts motion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The second motion has to do with settlement agreements, and it is to, actually, to approve settlement agreements for students identified as 2018-09 and 2018-10. I make that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved in second to approve the settlement agreements. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The Finance Committee is also scheduled, and the Facilities Committee, to meet on October 11th, 2017, here in this room. Committee reports, the next committee report is the IU. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Eurnell. The Bucks County IU welcomed, first we met on September 19th, Doylestown location. The Bucks IU welcomed all staff back to the 2017-18 school year on August 23rd, with three former executive directors joining our opening day. Dr. Filoso was one, so it was great to see Dr. Filoso again. There are lots of photos documenting the day, and at least this time, I was allowed to stand on a step, so I was dwarfed by Dr. Hoffman, so my picture looks way better. So Lisa, thank Dr. Hoffman for that. In the IU's continued support of all individuals with disabilities, they recently hosted a regional event for polio survivors. Our Facilities Department was given special thanks by the organization and appreciation for the help and assistance they provided in making the event successful. Transition services for our students with disabilities are focused, I'm sorry, are based on individual needs and focused on improving the academic and functional achievement of these students as they move from school to peer school activities. The Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, or OVR, is offering a new pre-employment transition service for students with disabilities across Pennsylvania and the transition service for students with disabilities across Pennsylvania, and the Bucks IU has been approved as a provider. Students aged fourteen to twenty-one will be provided these services as an enhancement to the transition services at no cost of a parent or a district. So Penridge has already, as I understand, began a conversation. Maybe I should be directing that too with the Bucks IU. Thank you. And other exciting news, the Bucks IU signed a lease for a purpose-y retail space in which they will move our eighteen to twenty-one-year-old transition programs. Construction quickly began, was completed by September eighteen. Just a few highlights of this new space include a kitchen, laundry facility, bathrooms that are AVA, of course, accessible, and multi-use instructional spaces. Programs to be housed at this location are WOW One, WOW Two, and MDS. They are already developing partnerships with the local businesses in that shopping center to facilitate developing authentic job skills. So thank you to the Bucks County IU for always seeking new ways to meet the needs of our students. Dates to remember, now through January seventh, the James A. Mishna Museum of Art is hosting an exhibit honoring the art collections of our local school districts entitled Dedicated, Display, Discover, Celebrating the Region's School of Art Collections, and I highly, highly recommend that you visit that exhibit. October ninth, the Bucks IU Education Foundation is again offering their twentieth annual golf classic and will be held at the Doylestown Country Club, eleven thirty to six P.M. For information, contact Nancy Bracken, and I understand this is a big deal because it's a private club, so it's pretty exciting. Saturday, October twenty-eighth, the Bucks IU is hosting an indoor craft fair to raise funds for their education foundation. The IU is looking for crafters, so please contact Kathy Burson to reserve your table. October seventeenth is the date of our next meeting to be held at the IU's Doylestown location at seven P.M. Thank you, Dr. Yarvin.
Thank you. Next, we will move to personnel. Mrs. Cullen is going to take on Mr. Rubomo's task tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Cullen.
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. Now, the personnel committee met on September sixth. There are, I guess, seven, seven motions for approval. The first one is the approval of certification stipends for Operation and Transportation Department employees.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve this certification stipends. These are done each year with the cooperation of our, Mr. Loppler, that helps make these recommendations. Do we have any comments or questions on these? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Cullen.
Okay, the next motion is to approve hiring two additional permanent substitute teachers and resource for teachers at a rate of one hundred dollars per day per substitute teacher.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Yarvin. Moved and seconded to approve two additional permanent substitute teachers. That's quite a kind of strange moniker, but that's such as it is. Comments, questions for board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
The next motion is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Penridge School District and the Penridge Education Association to adjust the Technology Department Coordinator from grades eight to twelve to grade six through twelve at the contractually specified rate.
Do we have a second to this motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve a change, a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the Technology Department Coordinator in terms of the grades served. Comments or questions from board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Cullen.
The next motion is to approve revised job descriptions for the following positions, mail delivery courier part-time, and human resources benefits secretary.
Second to this motion?
Second.
Mrs. Miller? Take Mrs. Miller's second. Moved and seconded to approve this change in job description. Comments or questions from board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Cullen?
The next motion is to approve an addendum to staffing agreement between the Bucks County Intermediate Unit and the Penridge School District to provide the services of Mr. Keith Gottschall to serve as assistant high school principal for an interim period of time to be determined by administration at a rate of three hundred dollars per day. The original agreement was written by the solicitor.
Do we have a second to this motion for staffing agreement? Mr. Kraus, moved and seconded. Comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Yarvin.
On the agenda, it says three hundred dollars per day, but when you open the contract, it has a different amount.
So the service fee is added into the contract if the CIU prepares that? So that's the upcharge. Mr. Gottschall will receive three hundred dollars a day, and then the additional is the upcharge that we pay to the company, Mission One, who'd be CIU for his services.
And do we have to go through them?
Right, because he's a former school district employee, so we can't hire him directly because of the retirement code.
Well, the district could, it just wouldn't be beneficial to him.
On an emergency basis.
Right. I mean, it would disqualify the candidate from continuing to collect his fees when he's retired. That's the issue. Any other comments or questions about this motion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. May. Motion carries six one. Mrs. Cullen?
Okay, the last motion is for, a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen salary for Dr. Jacqueline Raddigan, the superintendent of sports.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve the increase in salary for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year for Dr. Raddigan. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Cullen?
Okay, the next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for November eighth in this room.
Thank you. Next item is policy. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. The Policy Committee met on September sixth, and there is one motion. The motion is to approve the second reading and final revision of the following policy, policy number two forty-six, student wellness.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Mrs. Cullen, moved and seconded to approve the final revision of the student wellness, policy number two forty-six. Comments or questions from board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for November eighth.
Thank you, Mrs. Venus Clemmons, and we will move to the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. The JRC Seaman on September twenty-first at the Bucks County Technical, Upper Bucks County Technical School location. Parent night held on September fourteenth was a rouse in success, bringing over three hundred parents to the Upper Bucks Technical School. Our cosmetology students will be participating in the PA Barber and Cosmetology Association Student Competition in Williamsport on November fourth and fifth, and we'll be sure to bring the results to following that competition. Pennsylvania Department of Ed presented our technical schools with an Excellence in CTE Award, and has asked to do a profile of our technical school. PDE will share our best practices on a statewide basis and how we achieved excellence. This is yet just one more example of the wonderful things that our technical school is doing to meet the needs of our students and community, so congratulations to our administrative staff. The Rise Bakery in Rock Ridge, yeah, that's, that's an easy one. Rock Ridge Restaurant will open in October. Please see the website for details. We need to change the name of that, for me. Our next meeting is scheduled for October nineteenth at seven P.M. To be held in JRC Warmer, at the Upper Bucks Technical School. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm glad I'm not the only one who's tongue-tied, so thank you for helping me out. We'll move on to Technology. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. The Technology Committee did meet on September eleventh, where Mrs. Diane Miller presented an update of the happenings over the summer. I'd like to just review them for everybody. As you know, we had a lot of activity over the summer, so there was a district-wide network refresh that took place, electrical upgrades to support the switch network upgrade, phone system replacement and upgrades was conducted over the summer, installation of the security camera systems district-wide, middle school laptop collection reimaging and preparation for distribution, AP student laptop distribution, middle school teacher and student laptop distribution, elementary school computers and other technology, cleaning and reimaging. The middle school STEM laptops arrived and were distributed, set up, configured a new iPad mobile device management system that makes it a little easier to track the iPads, where they are, and what's going on. Coordinating with the TV studio at the high school, the computer equipment is on its way, and that activity is ongoing. There was an update to the software used for personnel management within the district as well, and the annual data rollover as well as student account management. So it's been a very busy summer. I'd like to commend Mrs. Miller and her staff for the hard work and make sure that we were ready to go when school opened. So as far as I know, there's been no hiccups. There was a minor delay in the implementation of the phone system to get all the numbers finally figured out, but overall, it was a very smooth transition for all that was done, so I appreciate their hard work and everything that they've done. Second, we do have one motion. And that motion is for... I forgot we had to bounce between the two different functions. So we have one motion to approve an additional technology integrator, primarily for the middle schools, the integration of the STEM program. We have, we've run out of resource to support that, so we have a motion for the approval of the technology integrator.
Do we have a second to this motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve the additional technology integrator. Comments or questions for board members? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. Now, the next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for October ninth, right here.
Thank you. Act Forty-eight. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. The Act Forty-eight committee has not met since our last board meeting, but they are scheduled, we are scheduled to meet on October fifth.
Thank you. And the ad hoc fundraising? Mrs. Yarvin, Mrs. Schmidt?
Ad hoc has not met since the last meeting, and at this time, it'll be scheduled as needed.
Thank you.
I just want to add...
Yes, I'm sorry.
I mean, the one contract that we just approved tonight for Grand View Health is an outgrowth of that, and we found that it was better to have that discussed at a finance meeting or a facilities meeting, one of those, finance. So the finance meeting rather than having a separate meeting, so sometimes we have the committee, like the committee meets at finance just because then there's more people there, so...
Okay, and yes, I think that definitely is a plus, and, Dr. Yarvin, Grand View Health. Okay, we'll move on to the Penridge Area Coordinating Committee. Mrs. Cullen?
Thank you, Dr. Yarvin. I was out of town last week when the PAC should have met. I haven't received a report yet from the chairman, but the next meeting should be Thursday, October nineteenth.
Okay. And I don't know, are you going to be out of town again? That's PSBA, right? Is it not? Okay. In any case, then we'll move on to old business. Any old business that board members want to discuss? No? Then we'll move to the next item, which is new business, and hopefully I can find that because this has to do with the annual request that we get to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, I guess it is, candidates for PSBA officers, and there are three separate, actually, four positions, I'm sorry, five positions. The president-elect, the vice president, the treasurer, and two trustee, trustees for the trust. So let's see if I can pull up the names. I can tell you, for what it's not worth, that I don't know any of these individuals personally. I do know that all the candidates except one are people that have, oh, thank you, I couldn't read the paper. Are people who have been endorsed essentially by PSBA, and that the one that is not endorsed is Mr. Schmidtley. I don't know if you know about him. We certainly have heard from him. He has been sending information to board members. He's up in the Scranton, well, actually, Carbondale area is the school district, but he's quite young, and he's been president of his board for, I believe, the last eight or nine years. When I say quite young, he's probably half my age, so I'll let you guess what that might be. But in any case, I know Mr. Boyd, who's running for president-elect, is someone who's run for this position before. I don't know Mr. Hutchinson personally, of course, I do because of my connections into State College, I do know some, something about the State College Board and their building, new buildings, so, you know, that's a major task, but I don't know this individual. So I guess I'm open to suggestions as to what people would like to do about this. In terms of the other candidates, there's only one candidate for treasurer and two candidates for the trustees, and those presumably, unless we vote against them, I've met Mr. Fasametto, who's from Bethel, Mary, but I don't know them personally. So anyone have a feeling of what they would like to, in the choice category, which really are the first two, Mr. Hutchinson or Mr. Boyd for president-elect, and Mr. Wolfgang or Mr. Schmidtley for the vice presidential person? No suggestions?
Do we vote as one, do we get one vote together, or do we each vote?
Yes, four votes.
At the IU, we each voted, and then that was, I guess, each district. But I thought we each voted.
Do you remember? I'm sorry. The whole board gives, I mean, we can vote for separate candidates, right?
But then the majority...
The majority is what gets cast by the board.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I didn't make it very clear. So does someone have a suggestion as to who among these candidates, who would like, if not, I will make a recommendation, but if anyone else has an idea?
If there are no recommendations from the board, my suggestion is to take them in alphabetical order.
Okay.
Have an up or down vote.
For, so you would say for Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Schmidtley, and then, of course, Mr. Grossit, and the two trustees, Fasametto and Neil? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think that, well, with respect to vice president, you have a recommended candidate there for PSBA, so I would take that individual first. And with the, with president-elect, I would do it in alphabetical order, and also with the trustees as well.
Well, there are two candidates and two, we vote for two.
Oh, I see.
So it's, it's like the treasurer, it's, if we choose to vote for any of the nominated people, we could vote for all of the nominated people.
I see.
Dr. Yarvin, we did receive resumes. I did read them.
Okay, yes.
I can't support it. I mean, I knew who I picked, I don't remember why I picked them, it's been a while, so I don't want to make a recommendation, but why doesn't everyone go home and read them?
I think this needs to be done today, right?
Oh, it does? Oh, okay.
Or this week, unless you want to come back at another night this week.
That's one, that's one.
You don't want to make, I mean, you're welcome to offer.
Well, honestly, I can't support my decision because I did it a while when I first got them, so I just haven't, no, go ahead, you're fine. I'll go.
Mr. Kraus?
My own for president-elect and vice president, I'm okay with the PSBA recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, and we can, the others are vote for one and for two.
Yeah, so unless we're not going to vote for somebody.
They can ride, as far as I'm concerned.
But now, the president-elect, they actually recommended both candidates.
I'm sorry, let's see, I'm just...
I think they're, they're not recommending the candidate so much as they feel that that person is qualified. I believe it's not a recommendation per se, it's more a qualified... No one else has a suggestion? Well, then I will suggest that we follow this advice in the attorney, that we nominate, well, I will nominate Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Wolfgang, Mr. Grossit, Mr. Fasametto, and Mr. Neil. As a motion, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Kraus, the move moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Comments or questions from board members on that order?
Okay, I'm not, I don't want to support that.
Okay.
Because I, I would pick the other person.
Yeah, the, wait, president-elect?
The president-elect, sorry.
Yeah, actually, when I just quickly read there, I would kind of prefer Otto Boyd's, what little information we were given.
All right, well, then.
Sorry, I was trying to read quickly.
Yes, I am willing to make amended recommendation. Mr. Kraus, are you willing to amend the motion to Mr. Boyd?
I was also actually going to vote for Schmidtley as the second, the vice president.
I just suggest of, you know, have an up or down vote on each, on each one in alphabetical order, right? And even, even with respect to the candidate who is, who is not recommended since Ms. Venus Clemmons appears inclined to support that candidate as well, so just take them in alphabetical order individually is my.
So then let me start with Mr. Hutchinson. So if he's the person that we're voting for, how many, just how many people approve, right? Who would vote for him? A motion to approve Mr. Hutchinson. A motion to approve Mr. Hutchinson. Second from?
Oh, second.
Is that what you're saying?
Sure, sure.
Okay, all right. All right, so then.
Why don't we have a roll call vote on that, Mrs. Clemmons, since it seems like there may be some dissent?
Well, yes, there's.
Or, or you can, you can do it verbally as well.